The bar that goes to you for testing will also come to us. And your assay will be compared to our assay to judge whether you have the required accuracy that is needed. And in that, we are hold to a standard where we cannot afford an error.
But can I also address the elephant in the room? Our biggest losses has been when we made transactional stages, system changes in our business, our transactional systems, SAP or your Microsoft system, when we change that, and you do that while you are running. And this is where we had our biggest losses, and that's a subject for a different day I'm going to talk about. Essentially, in your operation, basic of metal accounting is you've got input, process, materials. As long as you control input and output, and the one and three, your next step would be to control leakages through the bottom. And the principle we use in metal accounting in our business is the direction that's given by the AMIRA code, AMIRA P754 code at the bottom. If you're not using it, I highly recommend that you look at the AMIRA code. It is ten principles that describe how to do metal accounting. It is what general acceptable accounting practices and IFRS is for financial. AMIRA code is for the metallurgical industry. I have included it in the next slide, just out of interest for you, but what I have done is to indicate, maybe I should, the first numbers that I'm sharing here is on the right. For many, many years, our total recovery efficiency, so what's total recovery efficiency? Total input, what you paid your customers, total input before applying statistical normalization or mediation, total input, minus output, minus all the gold you can count in the process. And what we, for many years, we were stuck at 99.972%. We could not break through this number on this side. In the past seven years, we've done some work, helped us to break through, but for the past three years, we've sustainably have 99.902. And I'm going to share what we did. On silver, we not, we only do silver refining to get gold. And there we achieving 99% silver. But for us, at my default, silver, nines. What about the silver? So what does AMIRA say, and what have we created? To do a metal. Then what was your primary outcome? That? Based on history, sound, by your slack? By productivity? Through history? You allocate that. But what would have gone into?
I do stock count every month, clean on a Saturday, count on a Sunday. On every quarter, I do cleaning on Friday and Saturday, I count on a Sunday. And once a year, I stop for seven days and I clean. I vacuum every floor, every wall, incinerate everything until I found what metal accounting set should be in my byproducts. Your first and vital area can start with feedstock. Do you assay and sample correctly? So one of the things that we do is, we take six fire proles, fire assay proles, and we take two XRF discs for every deposit that arrive. Six get fire assayed, and we use statistical methods, known in the industry and outlier theory like Grubbs, et cetera, to decide the assay of the material. The next thing that we then do is, we compare that to two XRF discs that spark independently as a comparison, and they also determine our deleterious elements. The next thing that we do is, on weight determination, we only trade in mined gold, 99%, 98% mined gold. Gold can be wet. I don't know if you're aware of this. So when gold arrives, we weigh it, and it's got a wet weight. Then we put it to a 450-degree oven, and we weigh it again, and it's got a dry weight. That weight always differs. If you pay on the first one, you're out of pocket. And then, after that, we do the melting and sampling process, and we let it cool down overnight. Because if you base your sale on the weight after melt hot weight, go and do a test. It's different to the weight after melt cold weight, after cooling down through the night. Little things, small, small variances that determine your accuracy and your outcome. So provided you've done this correctly, you know that I've not overpaid, your risk is overpayment on the front end, and you have to control through progress. But all of this relies on mass balances or load cells. We prefer to use load cells, right? And we have a basic rule. Every load cell in our business is five decimals, and we buy and sell on seven decimals. There's 93 of these devices in our business. Of course, there's a huge amount of money, but not doing it, the risk is too high. What you have to understand is that airflow changes what you measure. You have to control airflow. We, in all our critical areas, we monitor what is the moisture in the environment. We will calibrate many times through a shift, because this morning's 19 degrees ambient temperature, a scale behaves differently, or a load cell behaves differently, to 27 degrees at 12 o'clock. Little things, decimals, right? And then, every mass balance has got next to it calibration weight. So there are two sets of 93 in the business. Every quarter, they get swapped while we, while we then recalibrate the swap, the B sample that's not being used. And the last one is, you have to allocate correctly. You cannot weigh a 1 kilo bar on a 30 kilo scale. It's one of the big errors that we are making. You have to size correctly. So once you've done that, the next area to focus on is your process. And again, I am being brave, and I'm sharing you. This is actual data that you can expect to find in your plant if you use these processes over a year per 100,000 kilograms or 100 tons of throughput. So typically, in sampling and evaluation, after 100 tons of throughput, you should expect to find around 40 kilos of gold in your bag plants, your slack, and you have to make certain that there's not losses and shavings on your samples. The next thing that you do is, we do miller refining. We can refine a 10% deposit, a 700 kilogram 10% deposit to 993 in 90 minutes. And it's a wonderful tool, but it comes with risk. But your losses are high. So the first pass efficiency, that first numbers, first pass efficiency is 98%. So a huge portion reports into your silver chlorides, into your pipes, so it lays on the inside of your pipes, that pipes has to be washed, your scrubbing systems. So that's what you need to expect to recover. The next part is in your electrolysis refining. Our first pass efficiency is 80%. So there's another number, you can judge whether you're good or bad. So if I load 320 kilograms of anodes, I got 270 kilograms of cathode out. This is where another one of the big errors is in electrolysis. The cathode is not always dry. So if you take the cathode and you melt it, it loses weight. And you can have spurious errors in your metal accounting if you work on the first weight, little things. And finally, in granulation, you can, in terms of the capping and inside the crucibles and inside the fumes, you will need to look for around 100 kilograms of gold through a year. Remember, you may recover some of this every month or every quarter, but if you add all of it together, that's the losses that you had to recover inside your plants. When we started to focus on this, life started to change for us. And then finally, in product manufacturing, so manufacturing that product, there is little shavings, weight adjustment, et cetera. We're looking at losses of around 2 kilograms of gold at the end of a year. One of the things that changed our lives is, when we started to focus on everything in our plant, nothing leaves, it dies there. A forklift dies in my plant. I cut the wheels up, I incinerate it, I grind down the paint from the, everything that crosses the border is a risk in terms of gold. Every crucible get crushed. So you have a jaw crusher, a bormel crusher, you put it over a gravity table. That recovery method of slack, in my opinion, is far better than any wet chemical process that I have seen. The mines use it essentially in their businesses. In the laundry, in the sumps of, so no clothing, when you go into the plant is with slacks and a t-shirt, you get a clothing in the inside. At the end of its period, I incinerate that clothing and your shoes. From clothing, shoes, and the traps under showers and toilets, we recover around 16, what did I say, the 16 kilos a year. It's a lot of gold. Everything gets incinerated. Sorry, the picture is not the right way around. No carton, no nothing leave the plant. If a contractor comes and work at my plant, his tools stay there, can't go out. I cannot trust the human. It is these controls that's changed and stopped leakage in the business. And then finally, you get to product. So by the way, I'm trying to recapture 100 years of history in a short moment. It's difficult. So final is the product. So we, we weight adjust and control everything. And I've already heard that there are some of you whose standards are closer to where it needs to be. I use sanding paper to weight adjust a kilo bar and a 100 gram bar. And the reason for that is, I know where the dust is. Many manufacturers has come and said they want to use lasers, and they demonstrated, and I asked them, where's the gold? You just took out 20 milligrams. Show me, where is it? Can I please recover it? But I know where the dust is, and I know how to recover it. There's an example. So typically, on a 1 kilo bar, our weight giveaway is 17 milligrams, 17 or 18 milligrams. There's an upper limit of 25 and a lower limit of nine. I know that some of you already hurt you down to 3 and 5 milligrams. I envy you. I'm too afraid to have a customer complain of an unweight bar in the market. We control the rolling of strip, that strip that we roll for making coins and minted bars to 1 micron. It's a very good German machine. It's got a laser on there that do the weight adjustments and precise control. And we have automated weighing systems with robots. And as far as possible, we automate throughout our business. And I'm giving you an idea on what's giveaways. So typically, on a 22-karat coin, where 20 milligram is the legal requirement for giveaway in a Krugerrand, and my assays is normally higher, so I give an assay giveaway as well, you get $1.81 loss on a Krugerrand. This we account for. So what I'm saying is, if you want to get your metal accounting right, at the end of the year, you must subtract all your giveaways. Sometimes we don't remember that. Silly little things that we do. And I think that more or less conclude. The last thing is, rejects is a silly thing. Reprocessing of rejects becomes something that you don't focus on, and it very quickly adds up. So the more you avoid rejects in the plant, your risk, the less your risk are. And so, and we follow many methods to control rejects. One of the things we do is, we refine as high as possible, 12 seconds. Silver, we refine to 4/9s, and we can even sell 5/9 silver. Why? Because of all the deleterious elements. You talked about oxidation earlier, et cetera. Gold granules, our assays is normally, we're by default, we refine to 4/9s 4, 4/9s 5. We've delivered hundreds of tons of 4/9 5 into the markets. And then we alloy down with silver. And the reason being, 9/9 5, you've got 5,000 particles per million of what? Could be anything bad. 4/9s, you've got 100 particles of deleterious. And some of our customers has complained that some of South African gold has got iridium in, so we'd rather go 4/9s and alloy down and sell that. And I'm giving you examples of our QC, and again, you can see what is the weight of a 1 ounce minted bar. So if you control weights correctly on the in, weights and assays correctly on the out, and you account for it. And if the inside, you manage your leakage by a formal metal accounting process, perhaps through the lessons we've learned, you can get to higher accuracies in total metal recovery than you currently have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bauer? You just need to raise your hand up.
Easy ones.
Well, honestly, your presentation was so precise and so interesting. I'm sure everyone's yes sir. We're sending a mic across.
Or it could be now that they know everybody is better, and that's good, no problem.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the presentation. And this has really given us some of the insights which we should, or any refinery should look at. I'm Ankur from MFTC PAM. What I want to know is, what's the final loss you envisage after you do the?
What is the refinery loss?
Yes.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay. So we divided in two. So the one is in minted products, because you give away per ounce there, and it's a bit bigger. So typically, on a 250 ton throughput, on a 1.2 million, on a 1.6 million ounces produced, my assay and weight giveaway on minted products will be around 23 kilograms of gold. On all the other products, so that will be 150 to 180 tons of kilo bars and 100 gram bars, that will be, it's a little bit less, will be 21 to 19 kilos of gold. That's my annual losses.
No, I get that. If you subtract all that out, what is the refinery losses which Rand is envisaging? If you add, suppose you have a total loss of, say, 50 kg, you minus all this, and what's the refinery process efficiency loss?
Yeah. So if I account for this, I showed you the refinery process efficiency is 99.99. You can do the calculation, you can subtract this and decide where it is then.
Thank you.
It's, just looking in maths in my head, it should be 99.98 then, if I look at the numbers, after subtracting that, yes.
Another one, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was really interesting when you made this storytelling. I just have one simple question. Sorry about my English. I'm just trying to say it more simple. And where we need to make more focus on people work, or on the pipeline, on the equipment, where we need to find more losers? What's your opinion?
On all of it, but it's, what we did is, we started to focus on people with a slogan said, "Every milligram matters, every milligram counts, every second matters." We started with that, and people started to think of life in milligrams. When they see something, they were thinking of milligrams, and they got to understand what milligrams was. Then we tightened up SOPs, and where possible, the SOP should include photos, and better is to have a video. You have two knowledge in your business. To manage this is knowledge management. The explicit knowledge you should capture through SOPs and videos. The tacit knowledge you should manage through key employee retention. There are some people, and it's not the three-degreed MBA from Harvard person that's the most valuable in your business. Could be that one person that takes the initial sample for the past 40 years, every day doing it precisely, over and over. 5,400 samples later, that determines your destiny. And it's starting to focus on those elements, and you can do it in parallel. The biggest change to get from 99.972 to where we are now, including rejects, and understand, your giveaways, was most probably the focus on what I showed, all the sweeps, the incinerations and stopping all the leakage through those areas. The last thing is, not a fume leaves the business, or electrolyte leaves the business, without recycling through filter presses, then going through a catalytic active column, then going through four days of settling tanks before it leaves the plant. Those were the key areas. Thank you.
All right, I think that's it then. Thank you so much, Mr. Bauer, for that amazing presentation. Honestly speaking, for somebody like me who's just a layperson in this entire hall full of learned people, I was thinking that if Mr. Bauer was a batsman in the South African cricket team, his presentation was equivalent to a clean sweep across the boundary. And for each one of you that was so interested, and you were taking screenshots of the LED screen, let me tell you, please sit back and enjoy these amazing presentations. Focus on your questions, focus on your engagement, because within one week of the conclusion of the conference, all these presentations will be live on the website. So you really need not go through the rigmarole of actually clicking these pictures. You would get a copy of each one of these presentations. Having said that, let me also tell you, I do hope that all of you have already installed the Habilo app. If you haven't, please, this is the time to do it. In case you don't know how that app is going to help you, anytime you take a bio break and you step out, please reach out to the registration counter, and they will just make you a little bit more aware of how you can be a more engaged delegate in the conference with the help of this app. Because this app will connect you with all the exhibitors, sponsors, and fellow delegates virtually. You can also post your questions during the session in the chat box itself. And of course, you're also entitled to some lucky draws, not only while using the app, but also when you visit the expo. So please ensure that you do both these things pronto. Now, as I move on to our next presenter, everyone, our next presenter is going to be, we were just talking about how to control the leakages. From here on, it's time to move on to mitigating the losses in the refinery system. And our speaker this afternoon on talking about risk associated with gold refining and how to mitigate them, our speaker has a 30 years experience with a demonstrated history of contribution in the precious metals industry, skilled in budgeting, operations management, team building, leadership, sustaining changes, strong engineering professional with a BE in metallurgy from Jhaddapur University, and excellence program in leadership and management from IIM Kolkata. Let's give a resounding welcome to the Vice President Works MMTC PAM, Mr. De Vasish Paticharji.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you organizers for allowing this opportunity to speak. Since morning, we have gone through characteristics of a good gold. And now, from Peter, we came to know about how to get controlled losses. So here, I will try to give you a picture into one more aspect that's associated with refining of gold, and which is actually assuming more importance as we go into recycling, is how to deal with the various hazards. So a brief introduction of us, just what Mr. Guel had already told us about what we do, we are primarily refiners and also produce coins. Now, when you talk about refining recovery of gold, it can be from doré, which is directly from the mines, it can be from jewelry vests, it can be from various types of other vests. But the first step that we always, or mostly tend to do, need to do rather, is a pyrometallurgical process. The second step is a chemical process and in electrochemical technique. And the most commonly used techniques are in quaternion and parting, aquarigia, and electrolysis. And we try to achieve minimum triple nine gold. That's our target. While refining the gold, we are faced with many impurities. Even silver is an impurity. So silver, copper, zinc, tin, iron, nickel, cobalt, bismuth, aluminium, tellidium, selenium, cadmium, lead, PGM group, they needs to be removed. Basically, you need to remove all this, and what you are left with is a gold. So ideally, it is 100%, but truly speaking, it's a 24-karat which can be 5/9 and even higher also. Now, to, before starting the process, we must, we need to know what are the impurities, because that actually helps you to arrive at your correct purity by selecting the correct method. How do you select a method? The first thing is, what you look in your end product? What is the end product characteristics that you are looking for? What is the gold content, impurity content, including silver in your starting material? The physical and chemical characteristics, the physical means shape, is it a powder? Is it an agglomerate? Is it a solid form? Is it a dust? Or is it a liquid? And in what form? Is it a complex? It is a simple alloy? Inventory holding capacity, because this refining process takes time. So how much you can hold the inventory? How long you can sustain? Because that's a loss of interest. So you need to calculate that also, because it adds to your cost. Economic feasibility, such as the quantity. You cannot just arrive at a process or arrive at a technique which is not feasible for you. You cannot go for a big instrument or big capacity digester while your inflow is inconsistent. Availability, the logistics cost, and also, as Peter has told, about the expertise. The gentlemen who are doing, they must have the skills. Every time, you cannot hire a consultant who is an expert, because that's a cost. And lastly, the safety and environmental regulations. So when you are actually planning to do a refining and recovery, you must be very careful about how to select based on these factors. The risks associated with refining of gold are, namely, first, the product. What is the purity you will get? And also, the metal losses. And secondly, the risk, which in this topic we'll talk about, is the risks on human health and environmental impact. The major pyrometallurgical processes that we involve here are incineration, that means in a simple language, it's burning. The main aim is to drive off the moisture and the organics. Volatilization, whereby applying heat and vacuum, you blow off the, those deleterious which are having lower melting temperature than that of gold. Oxidation, various techniques, you can blow air, or it's called roasting, where basically you give it a characteristics where in the later stage, you can leach it better. That means you improve its chemical reactivity. Basemarization, where you can remove the copper by giving it oxygen, selectively removing copper, by adding sodium nitrate on oxides, so that you oxidize and remove the unwanted base metals in their oxide form. And if it is a smelting operation, it floats on the surface, being a lighter material, and you skim it off. So what you are, what you are left with is your wanted material, the precious material, which you can finally collect and send for refining. Or cupulation, where you use lead and form oxides. Lastly, chlorination, miller chlorination, which Rand refinery was referring, where you purge liquid chlorine into the molten metal, and the base metals get chlorides from slags, you skim off, and you are left with a rich gold along with the PGMs. Some of the equipments, incineration, some of the heating, melting equipments, progressively, you see, it's a, I have just forgot to put the fuel fired one. If it is an, it can be an induction furnace, it can be a small resistance furnace, it can be a rotary furnace, you are using fuel, or an electric furnace. So various techniques are available for this. Important is what you are looking for, what is the cost, what you are trying to remove. So all this dictates what you will actually select while doing the pyrometallurgical refining process. Now, this is a new kid of the block, thanks to EKOE, who have come up with this ALS furnace. It's a furnace where you can remove the base metals except copper, and anything that is having less melting temperature than gold, under application of heat and vacuum inside this chamber, you can suck off them and get collected while your gold and copper and PGMs in a setup remains at the bottom. As you can see, it's a completely enclosed vessel. As you can see, it's a completely enclosed vessel, very different from the images that I shared in my earlier, no heat outside, that means no heat hazard. So this equipment has been designed not only to prevent losses but also to ensure that the person working is well taken care of, his body is well taken care of. Now, moving on from the pyro to the chemical and electrochemical, as I said, three processes mainly used, though there are other processes like thyuria, like physi process or ester, but the most commonly used are inquartration and parting, aquarigia digestion and precipitation and then the whole way electrostatic process. In what we do in inquartration, we simply dilute down the gold content to twenty-five percent by adding more silver and structurally, it just forms a structure where there is gold at the center while outside, it is a layer of silver. And when the outside is layer of a silver, you can attack it with sulfuric acid or nitric acid. So everything gets dissolved, you have a nitrate or sulfur, sulfuric base solution of silver from which you can get or later on get the silver precipitated while the gold gets unreacted along with the PGM if present where it is the base metal, the gold, you can get up to ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine point two percent if you do it properly. And this reaction, just the reaction I have shown for nitric acid where M stands for the metal which is getting reacted, it reacts with nitric, you get NO3 which I will discuss is one of the hazardous metal, hazardous gases while finally you get the, it's solution and the gold remains unreacted and settles at the bottom. The majorly used processes are electro refining and chemical refining. Chemical refining is the aquarigia where you put the doray or other solid metal, dissolve it in royal water, that's aquarigia, three parts of hydrochloric and one part of nitric acid, digest the gold, filter it and then selectively precipitate it out with the help of a precipitant and you get the gold. While in electrolysis, you carry the electrolysis with the help of cathode anode structure and finally arrive at a very high purity. Now, a comparison of this, you can see there are many processes, each has its pros and cons. You have to select which is giving you the best combination. Now, let us identify the hazards. So when you are in the pyro process, we generate fumes which can have dust, it can have carbon compounds, it can have metal oxide, it can heavy metal particles. None of them can be thrown out, not only from the loss point of view, but you have to treat them because they contain hazardous metal and heavy metals. Slags, even the slags contain toxic material, you cannot simply dump it. While the chemical process gives you fumes which can have untreated acids, it can have nitrous compounds, it can have sulfur dioxide, it can have chlorine, it also generates fumes, effluents which is highly acidic, they have chemical salts, they have dissolved base metals. So they need to be treated properly before you can discharge. While there are sludges and salts because of the reactions which can get classified as a hazardous material. So their disposal is important and by all means, it has to be taken care of. When you talk of pyrometallurgical process, during heating and melting, it contains lots of carbon, dust particles, oxides, esterup while from the fume from chemical refining, it happens due to the reaction. As you can see, there are a lot of reactions that happen and I have tried to pinpoint the specific ones which are toxic like NO. This is a, this is an NOx compound, NOx compound of nitrogen, chlorine and SO2. So these three are mainly hazardous gases or carries off with the fumes which needs to be properly treated before you can discharge. So this is the reason, this is the source from where these are getting generated. Now, these are the various aspects that of refining which needs to be taken care of, global warming, etrophication, respiratory effects, ecotoxicity, carcinogenics, non-carcinogenics, fossil fuel depletion, acidification, photochemicals, smoke. So basically, when you are leaving it untreated, these compounds are reacting in various way and coming back either on our body or into our environment and causing lots of issues on the ecosystem. You can see a human body, if you say cadmium, it affects your respiratory and cardiovascular, it is carcinogenic too. Lead, it gets, it affects your central nervous system and the renal system. Selenium and tellurium, it causes fluid generation inside your lungs. Arsenic dioxide, it can lead to lots of vomiting, diarrhea, hemorrhage in a setup. Iron nickel cable, of course, they don't have much of an effect, but if you are giving it untreated and then it can lead to lot of diseases like mercury, it is dangerous, zinc, it is dangerous. So all these elements, they are, they necessarily need to be covered before they can be liberated or they can be just get into the environment, they need to be taken care of. Similarly, all this on the, they have an effect on the environment, they get up, they come back in form of rains or if untreated will go into the water and affect the aquatic and flora and fauna. So we need to take care of everything very carefully. Now, these are the government regulations, you have to take care of the, this is a government regulation by the Indian Government Central Pollution Control Board, I am sorry, that should be CPCB. Sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, the particulate size, the particulate size two point five, the lead, arsenic nickel, this are regulations of the government. So whatever you discharge has to be within this. Control measures, when you are melting, you need to have a proper suction hoods, the hood should properly cover the furnace mouths and then the emissions should be properly passed through series of filters, first stage, second stage and then airborne particles should be treated through scrubbers which not only neutralizes if any acidity is there but also makes the air completely clean and the scrubber efficiency should be properly monitored and you need to do the emission sampling through authorized agency as well as internally so that all the elements that I mentioned in my last slide, they are well taken care of before you can discharge air. Similarly, the chemical fumes, it can go through scrubbers, inside the scrubber, it can be multi-stage, it can be single-stage, multi-stage, then you need to properly take care of the scrubbing solution, the scrubber inside, there are strainers, they need to be properly maintained and also you need to sample it regularly, the discharge quality so that you can get into the proper discharge quality. And do use an expert vendor while you design all these things because there are many people who are not savvy with the pollution norm, they just give you a scrubber and ultimately you see, you are not getting the desired result. Now, as a, in addition, there are effluents, that means when you are doing the reactions, you are doing lots of, generating lots of effluents, it's an acidity, it's a lots of impurity in the dissolved form. So the acidity needs to be controlled thus, thus those base metal elements which are in dissolved forms, they have to be completely depleted off so that finally you get an effluent which complies with these five parameters, pH, total suspended solid, oil and grease, biological oxygen demand and chemical oxygen demand. Now, for CPCB has given a guideline for all refinery operation that twenty-four hour the data gets transmitted to their server. So they are monitoring and they have given you a limit that for this number of times I allow you, if you go beyond that number of times, I will penalize you which can lead to the closure also. For mitigating the measures for the hazard from effluent, you need to, not only you need to do lots of treatment like your resin treatment, neutralization, flocculation, settling, filtering, lots of strips before you send to ETP, but that is not enough. So in ETP also, you need to take care of. So it's a combination of your internal plus ETP so that finally you get to the correct quality of the effluents and this is a necessity, this is not my wish that I want to do, I do not want to, you don't have any choice. Okay. So the gold refinery and recovery, all this consists of complex steps, pyrometallurgy, heat, then each has got their chemicals which are giving toxic effects. The OSAS guidelines of HIRA, that is Hazard Identification and Risk Assessments are becoming increasingly stringent to ensure safety. Hence, all refinery needs to adopt a strategy which aims to mitigate the risk fully and provide a convincing evidence in a transparent manner during any audit. You need to get these audits done from external agency, you need to meet, do a proactive monitoring of your parameters, you need to use a correct PPE and help the gentleman who is doing, his health is important and the working examination of the gentleman who is working for deleterious like your lead buildup in your blood, like the chest X-ray, what is the condition of this air lungs, all this needs to be monitored and recorded so that you are very sure that if any audit happens through a government agency, you are not at risk. For the sake of the business continuity, those refineries or even the jewelry units who have said the refinery, they need to reactive evaluate in terms of the increasing stringent demands that is coming or will be coming in, or will be coming in the days ahead, we need to mitigate that. Rather, I would also suggest that you can think of getting in touch with some agency or some refineries who have already said all these things are meeting because that will not only give you a mental peace that I am getting my gold refined through somebody who is complying, but also at the same time may also help you to get a green gold certification, chain of custody, esterup. So all this implies that refining is not only just earning good gold and earning money, but it's a responsibility and all we need to do it together. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. We are running a little short of time, so we are not having the question answer session here. Our next speaker is already waiting and as I have invited you all, you can anyway post your queries on the Habilo app and they shall be addressed later. Having said that, let's give a huge round of applause to Mr. Bhattacharya. Thank you so much, sir. Without further ado, check, let me invite our next speaker up here. Ladies and gentlemen, as most of you are already aware, we are talking about a company, Fisher India and as most of you know, Fisher India is a company that is, that need not, you know, doesn't need any introduction in the gold refining and calibration process. Mr. Rakesh Kumar Bhan is the Managing Director of Fisher India and he will be speaking to us on recent developments in measuring gold content in alloys. Mr. Bhan is responsible for the development of Fisher business in India, Sarg countries and MENA, Middle East and North African region and he's had a wide experience of more than twenty-five years in local and multinational organizations in various facets of business. He has an international outlook and an expertise in profit center operations as well. Ladies and gentlemen, as he comes up, Lehiwut Bhi has a varied experience in the field of analytical instruments, spectroscopy, coating thickness, material testing, material analysis, micro hardness, inline measurements, process automation and machine tools. And as most of you are aware, Helmet Fisher Group is a leading supplier of instruments and solutions for precious metal analysis and coating thickness measurement. So as he comes up on the stage, he will be speaking on recent developments in measuring gold content in alloys. As I request you all to put your hands up for Mr. Rakesh Bhan, let me also tell you that the speaker has fifteen minutes and if he does stick to the timeline, we shall have a question answer session, but we are also hoping to very soon join none other than Prime Minister Modi himself for the launch of IBICS in Gift City and that will happen in a short while from now.
So good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great honor to be here and I thank Eventil Global for organizing this nice conference. I'm a little under pressure because Mr. Modi is there, so I had to finish it, I think, before that. To start off with, I think we had a good presentations first of all by Peter regarding the losses, how they have taken care of the losses and the second presentation by Mr. Devashish was mostly about what you call hazardous and how do you take care of that one. Now, to continue on that one, what I would be presenting basically is the recent developments in the assaying of the pure, the gold and other alloys because this is one of the main element within your processes. So just a small overview about our company, I come from Fisher, Helmet Fisher Group, which is a German multinational, having head office or headquarters in Sindelfingen, Germany. We are roughly around having twenty-five subsidiaries across the world, including India and we are one of the leading suppliers of EDXRF instruments for precious metal analysis as well as for coating thickness measurement. As far as Indian operations is concerned, we started operations here in India in 2006 and since then, we have been working with our partners across India and the Middle East region. We have been innovative suppliers, as I mentioned, it's a very old company formed in nineteen fifty-three and since then, we have come a long way and as the technology has also improved over the years. So we are able to offer a lot of solutions, both offline, online as well as inline solutions for our customers. Okay, now let's go ahead and get into the main topic. As we have gone through that, there are various stages of processes which are involved in terms of treatment or in terms of getting the final gold. As you know, we have got different ores and there are a lot of impurities which needs to be removed and finally, when the gold is, you get a fine pure gold which goes back to manufacturing, there again, you do basically add silver and other metals to make a jewelry and then the cycle continues because then again, recycling of the same gold happens, comes back to you as a raw material. So during all these stages, you need certain analytical instruments or tools with which you are able to basically figure out what is the content of gold and what all other metals are present. So this is what my topic is, basically where we will go further. Basically, why does the role of analysis, why do we do analysis? As we know, because we need to know the purity of the gold because that's the endpoint. When you receive the raw material, you need to figure out what is the amount of gold which we have here. And the secondly, what all metals or alloys are present in this mixture or the ore what we have. We again need to understand some of the elements which are present, which are like an adulteration within the alloy. So you need to have tools which can do that. And finally, the quality control process, as Rand also said, you need to have certain processes in place or quality controls which will ensure that all the processes are falling in line. And sometimes you also have to measure basically some decorative coatings which is a topic more for the industrial applications where they do some kind of decorative coatings and then they need to measure the thickness of those coatings. So the various methods of analytical methods are available which are there actually to measure the purity of the gold. The traditional old one used to be the assay test where we used to basically rub it against the stone and based on the color of this thing, we could figure out. And it's a very, it's not a very accurate method because again, depends on the skill of the person who is doing it and has been traditionally used in mostly in the shops and small establishments. Then comes the fire assay which is basically the standard where basically you remove all other impurities and then you get the final gold. The thing is, it's one of the standards still there, but as you all know, it's a time consuming and also you are able to only figure out the gold content in that one, you are not able to get other materials in that one. Then what we have is an ICPOES which is again an accurate method for measuring basically the impurities in the final gold and from that, we can figure out what is the content of the gold. And finally, we have X-ray fluorescence basically which works on the EDXRF principle, energy dispersed X-ray fluorescence principle. It's the most widely used and easier to, method to use and that's why we will be spending more time on this method. So why do we use EDXRF method? Basically, again, it's a fast, quick and accurate and non-destructive method. It requires very less or no basically sample provision, you can directly put the metal there itself and get the analysis of the sample. It's an quantitative analysis of not only the gold, but you can also get other metals which are present in the sample, including the platinum group metals like rhodium, iridium and osmium. And very easy to use, as I mentioned, it's very easy to use and you can easily implement it within your processes and quantification of all the metals happen in one single measurement. You don't need to do multiple measurements, within one single measurement, you will be able to figure out how many metals are present and what is the percentage of each metal. This technology is also getting more interest because there's a lot of latest development in this technology in terms of the detector sensitivity and signal processing with the result of which the, what you call the accuracy and the precision of these instrument has grown manifold and it is now in comparison is comparable to now to the fire assay method, very close to the fire assay method. Now, as far as the components of the EDXRF concerned, it consists basically of an XRF tube which excites basically the metal or the sample itself and during this process, there is a release of energy which we call there is a release of energy which we call the fluorescence lines and this fluorescence lines is detected by a detector, depending on the energy lines which are coming, it decides which, how many metals are present and the intensity with which these fluorescence lines are coming decides basically the percentage of metals. So, as a user, you just need to place the sample, focus it and just do the measurement and within thirty seconds, you are able to get the analysis of the whole sample. Now, let's talk about the various factors or the advances which has helped in terms of improving the accuracy and reproducibility of this method. Basically, some of the, there are two factors, one is the factors which are related to the instrument and the other is the environmental factors. Let's talk first about the factors within the instrument which can help to improve the performance. One is basically the resolution of the detector, is the detector which you are using which basically decide what is the kind of accuracy and the precision which you are getting at the end of the day. The pulse processor, it's an important, basically one of the component in the XRF because you may have a very good detector but at the end of the day, if the pulse processor is not able to process the signals which are coming from the detector, you cannot get the final end results. Colometer is nothing but basically the area where you are targeting the sample, now depending on the area available, you can choose the colometer, right colometer for the application. The measuring distance is basically the distance from the sample to the detector area, I will go more detail into that one. Measuring time also plays an important role and finally the calibration of the instrument because that's important where you get the traceability of the results back to your certain standards. Now, as far as the external factors are concerned, you need to take care of the sample homogeneity because you know the XRF is a point measurement, that means whatever results you are getting from the XRF will be on the basis of that measurement on that particular spot. So, it is very important that your sample has to be homogeneous enough so to get the analysis of the whole bar. Environmental conditions in terms of the, what you call the temperature, the humidity and all other things needs to be taken care of to get the best of the results. The positioning of the sample also plays an important role, it's not just you just place the sample, do the measurement and then you expect the results. That means you need to do a proper focusing of the sample and place it properly to get the best results. Focusing is as you mentioned and measurement approach in terms of how do much sampling you do and how you are doing this one, this is something more important to get the final results. Now, coming on to the detectors, basically we have three level of detectors which are used in the EDXRF. The earlier one which used to be the proportional counter detector which is basically a gas-filled argon, with the argon gas which ionizes the, basically the argon inside based on the excitation which is coming from the sample. It was earlier use, it's good enough when you are using, when you know exactly what you are measuring, for example, if you have two, three metals, then you can use this because the resolution of this detector is very high, it's roughly around nine hundred electron volt. So, the more and more metals come into play, then this is not the right instrument for your application because then the interference of the elements which are very close to each other starts and the software is not able to figure out whether it is, element is present or it is the other metal. The next one which came in was a silicon pin detector which is much better resolution in terms of you have hundred seventy to two hundred electron volt, that means it is able to measure more elements within the sample, if the samples are very close to each other also, you can measure with the help of this detector. And finally, now we have silicon drift detector which is a higher end version of, you can say, of silicon pin detector and here you get a very high count rates, at the same time you are able to get a good resolution. Yeah, so this is the latest one which is most widely used and where you can get the highest of the precision. So, the latest what you get in the technology, as I mentioned, the technological advances which are happening is basically because of the silicon drift detector along with the digital pulse processor because as I mentioned earlier, you may have a very good detector but at the end of the day, if it is not followed by a good digital pulse processor which processes the pulses which are coming from the detector, you are not able to get a good results. So, combination of detector with a digital pulse processor which can process count rates of say around one lakh, one lakh fifty thousand is important. This was basically again what we talked about, the new STD along with the DPP plus, as you can see here, I can show you here, the basically here on this one, you can see the old DPP with the, with the blue color and whereas with the orange one is with the new STD DPP detector, you can see this, even with the lesser time, you are able to get a very highly accurate and standard deviation is much, much better and at the very high resolution itself. So, that's the best part about the new detector with the DPP here also, you can see here, for example, the orange line, it shows the count rates with the high resolution whereas the old one with the blue one is with the old detector and then old DPP. Now, coming to the second point, that is the measurement, colometer area which I am again mentioned is one of the requirements, the idea itself is, colometer is basically the spot where we are targeting the X-ray on the sample, the bigger the spot, the better they get the results but again, it will depend on the area of the measurement. So, depending on that, you had to select the right colometer for that. We have again advancements in the colometer technology as well because at some of the times, you may not be able to get a bigger colometer area especially in case of jewelry or in case of localized measurement points. So, even with small colometers with the help of what you call polycapillaries, we are able to target basically the XRF on the small spots and still able to get the same intensity. This is a new technology which has happened in terms of the colometer, so even with small colometers, we are able to get high intensity and the best results. Measuring distance plays an important role because that's the, basically the distance from the, your detector area to the actual sample. So, now again, if you have samples which are of irregular size or sometimes you have bars which are thicker and thinner size, so accordingly you need to adjust the measuring distance. So, the software should be able to figure out how far away you are from the measurement area. So, that's where we need to have a, basically the measurement distance adjustment where it takes care of the change in the measuring distance so that at the end of the day, you get the accurate results. Measuring time, again, important because the repeatability or the precision of your instrument, of your measurement results is basically a square root of your measuring time. That means if you increase the measurement time by four times, your repeatability will increase by two times but that doesn't mean that you can keep it forever that you can get a better result. So, the idea itself is that after a certain measurement time, you may not be able to get this, any major changes. So, instead of that, the better would be to do multiple measurements and take an average of that one. So, that was more better than just making one single measurement of a bigger time. So, with the advances, as I mentioned, with the new technology and the processing signals, we are able to get a very highly accurate results even within fifteen to thirty seconds. Calibration is an important part because any measurement which you do, it has to be traceable with certain standards. That's why you need to have a right standards with which you are calibrating the instrument so that you are able to get the right results and at the same time, these results are traceable to the international standards because whenever, for example, in the chain, whenever you want to showcase the measurements which we have done on a particular XRF, it has to be correlated with a certain standards. So, that's all from my side, thank you all for your attention and if there are any questions, please feel free to us. We are also here in a stall, so if you have any more questions, you can come there and we'll be more than happy to discuss them. Thank you.
Sir, with your permission, I would like to extend an invitation to everyone to come and catch up with you on the stall.
Yes, thank you.
Since we are running short of time, everyone, can we please have a double round of applause for Mr. Bhan for not only his presentation but his infinite patience this afternoon.
No problem, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. So, everyone, with this, we move on to the final presentation of this session but let me tell you that as far as the knowledge session of the day is concerned, we are barely halfway through, we have some very interesting panel discussions coming up in a short while from now but for now, let me introduce to you our next speakers, our next speakers for this session. We have the lovely Ms. Christina Kern, the Project Manager, Technology Development Office, Krastwest Met and along with her, along with her, we also have her co-presenter, Mr. Stani Stav would be joining her on the stage to co-present this. Ladies and gentlemen, as these two people come up on the stage, this is the final one for this session, we come back with a panel discussion.
Hello, everyone, thanks for your patience. I would like to say that it was my first time presenting here, it's my pleasure to be here today and even more, we are glad to get back offline and being here with quite a big team from Krastwest Met. So, just a few words about the topic of our today's report, taking into account the fact that since the establishment of our company seventy-nine years ago, refining has been being our key business, that's why today we would like to share with you our like key find-outs, key developments in this field, hope you will enjoy it. So, briefly about today's agenda, today we would like briefly remind you what is our company's profile, to share with you our recent updates and also to move forward to our core topic about refining technologies and development, to share with you what we have designed new for the industry. And then last but not least, we would like to share with you some key takeaways, our cooperation opportunities and to discuss it together if possible. So, going further to the Krastwest Met profile, it's necessary to say that traditionally, we are precious metals refinery, refining all eight precious metals which you can see on the slide, both secondary and primary but we are quite active also a part of this in other directions, for example, Industrial Solutions Division, Jewelry Division, which also offer quite a wide range of different products and services. You will learn more about it just in a minute and as for now, let's start with the refining. At the very beginning, I would like to stick your attention to the photo which you can see on the slide, here you can see our famous gold and palladium bars but at the same time, you can say that it's pretty traditional product for each refinery. But if you take a closer look to the, to this picture, you can see other products which are like powders, grains, chemical compounds of high purity up to four nines. At the same time, we do understand that our today's customers need more comprehensive solutions, not only products but also different services. That's why we also provide related services of logistic, IT services and sample analysis. Just a few numbers, so last year we've done with more than two hundred tons of gold, it's around sixty percent of Russian market, also we are quite big in PGMs and around eighty tons are like for palladium and we have made up to five tons of silver last year. Going further to our next business, Industrial Solutions, I would like to underline once again that our key goal is to add value to precious metals. So, using fine precious metals, we do produce different technical applications for the industry, for example, catalytic gases for the nitrogen industry, bushings for glass production industry and reference materials for analytical purposes. But at the same time, we are making transformation from just production company to technological company, that's why we also provide different services, for example, equipment cleaning, engineering, technological support. And our youngest business is jewelry, here we are mostly famous for our machinery worn chains in different colors with different coatings. As you can see, we take quite a big share of Russian market but at the same time, we are trying to use this expertise, this experience to develop our overseas sales and here our focus is on development of our employees and here I would like to say many thanks to the host of this event for launching the visit of jewelry market, it will be helping for us to understand international trends and to broaden our horizon, thanks a lot. So, I hope your attention is still here and now we are go to the sweetest part of our report about our RND park and science. So, since the establishment of our company, we do have our own RND park, it is focused on improvement of current existing technologies and also on development of new technologies. Currently, we have two research groups for pyrametallurgy and also hydrometallurgy and hydro is divided into four sub-directions, it is classical precipitation, electrochemistry, iron exchange and solvent extraction. And as a separate direction, we have also synthesis of new products, for example, homogeneous catalysts which allows us to face new challenges from the industry and to help not only our company but also to help the industry to solve some problems. Now, we are moving forward to the core part of our report, so about recent advances in the refining. Here, I would like to share a little bit of history. So, if you can see, here we have like the division and different types of refining, electro refining and chemical precipitation. So, the hugest changes happened in the beginning of nineteen nineties when we decided to replace electro refining with chemical refining. After that, the second step was when we have decided to split all the raw materials into five key groups. As you can see, here we have gold, dora with low content of silver with PGMs, then the same gold, dora with low content of silver but without PGMs, jewelry scrap, then gold, dora with silver from ten to twenty percent and then gold, dora with silver up to forty percent. We have manufactured different production lines for these types of materials. Today, we would like to focus mostly on three of them, on the dora with a content of silver less than ten percent with PGMs, jewelry scrap and on gold, dora with a content of silver up to twenty percent, just because we consider these groups as the most interesting one. So, let's start with the first. Here, you can see the gold, dora with the content of silver less than ten percent. So, what was done here? In addition to classical precipitator, we have added additional precipitator and as a result, the refining was accelerated by ten percent and the whole process became more selective to gold. So, almost no PGMs were found in gold. And what is important, also harmful NOx emissions were like reduced also by five times, this is the first case. The second case is closely related to jewelry scrap, here the main issue was with a great number of different operations which we had. So, working with the solution, making a proper preparation of this solution as the dissolution step, we received the result of having only one cycle and a sub-product of PGM solution which can be also refined further. And last but not least, here we would like to talk about gold, dora with a content of silver up to twenty percent. As far as you know, silver creates a lot of passivation, that's why it was decided to, to struggle with this somehow and as you know, so if you don't use our technology but just base case, it's necessary to add additional gold to refine and to overcome this passivation but after our redesigning of dissolution step, no more like preliminary preparation is needed. So, dora immediately goes to the dissolution step. It was all about our refining technologies, here we would like to talk a bit about cooperation opportunities. So, despite the fact that all these cases I have just introduced are pretty different, usually working internally in our company or with our customers, with our partners, we follow the following procedure, for example, we start with the audit, then we do an onsite research, then make a simulation model, prepare a report with recommendations and then technology transfer happens. But at the same time, despite the fact that we have different clients in different regions, for example, India, China, Kazakhstan and etcetera and despite the fact that all of them are pretty different, it's necessary to say that the model which I have shown here is pretty flexible. So, you can enter this process at any of these stages and everything depends on a particular case, particular equipment, technology which is used and volumes. So, that I would like to say that our team who is presenting here today is ready to answer any of the questions which you have, to discuss any particular case which you have at your production site. So, thank you very much for your attention, I hope it was, it was interesting for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Kern for, you know, just explaining the entire process. Would you have any questions for Ms. Christina Kern? She's got a team member here who would be able to answer these questions.
Everyone is tired, understandable.
Maybe not even tired, I think your presentation was fantastic, it was concise and it just was to the point. Would you like to add something to it, sir?
So, here is my colleague Stanislav Turjevich.
Hello, everyone, I just want to say that if you find some question about potential cooperation about our presentation, we can find us today and tomorrow, this, in this hotel, in our site and we are glad to see you and go to discuss any, any fields. Thank you.
Fantastic and thank you so much for that point, this is exactly what the point of the conference is that you can consistently go on asking questions.